Okay. I'll be there. I'll bring it over. Thank you. What's that?
I told her to run. Or counsel.
I'm gonna make a motion. Oh, yes. I know, but it doesn't matter.
I was showing off your cat in the foundation meeting. Such a beautiful cat.
He is. He's spoiled. Really spoiled. That's it. Beautiful. He?
Yep, not going to hear you on.
Please give me a hand. Hold him. There. You're beautiful. I love the eyes. One eye sober.
Oh, wow.
All right, the clock has struck thirty. If we could all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening to all in the chambers, as well as to those tuning in online. At this time, I'd like to have Clerk Tomasic please call roll.
Schumate.
Here.
Cox.
Here.
McNabb.
Here.
Mulnar.
Here.
Valentine.
Here.
Walden.
Here.
Wood.
Thank you, clerk. We do have one absent member in Councilwoman Wood. Is there a motion to excuse absent member, Councilwoman Wood?
Motion to excuse, Marsha.
Go ahead. Marsha's got it, and I'll second.
Great. Any discussion? Katie, please call roll.
Cox.
Yes.
McNabb.
Yes.
Mulnar.
Yes.
Schumate.
Yes.
Valentine.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
Cox.
Yes.
Thank you.
We have our agenda in front of you this evening to members of public and council. Obviously, council, you have the supporting information in your packet. We did receive a note from Clerk Tomasic related to three items from Acting Chief Simon related to fire actions. So, council, I would request that we consider a motion to add basically these three items. One is to request to purchase turnout gear. The other one is not requiring action, but it's related to an EMT class. And the other one is potential new fire department members. So those two are just communications, but a motion to add the request to purchase turnout gear would be in order if you so choose.
I'll make the motion, Adam.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Cox, I heard first. Any discussion on that matter? That would be added as item B under Deputy Fire Chief Simon's report. Great. Katie, please call roll.
McNabb.
Yes.
Mulnar.
Yes.
Schumate.
Yes.
Valentine.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
Cox.
Yes.
Great.
Motion carried. At this time, members of public, with an approved agenda, we'd like to turn it over to you. So we'd like to welcome any public comment this evening. If there's any members of public that wish to address council, please approach that podium, make sure that light is green, and state your name and address.
Dennis Bosmer, 29775 Point Drive. Just real briefly, on April 11th, there was a blood drive them organizing with a couple entities, one of them being the City of Gibraltar Parks Recreation and the City of and the Gibraltar School District's on board. So April 11th, if you're free, we can schedule appointments online via the phone system. I can schedule your appointment if you'd like to anyone sitting up there or in the audience today. Love to have you join us. It's open to everybody. I think we, as Americans, can get along around that idea more than anything is helping our fellow neighbor out with blood donations, whether it's platelets they need for chemo or whatever people need blood for. So just want to make mention of that. Again, it's at the Guild Talbert Community Center, April 11th, 10:00 a.m. till 4:00 p.m. I think everything's full from 3:00 to 4:00 already, but there's a lot in between. Gap's open still, so I'd love to have your attendance there. Thanks for your time.
Thank you so much. Is there any additional members of public that wish to address council? Keep in mind, we'll have another public comment session before we adjourn this evening. There's no further comments. I'd like to turn over to the next agenda topic, which is a very exciting moment for the City of Gibraltar. Obviously, it's been in flight, and you've heard the public discussions, but we're here to swear in and have an oath of office for our newest police officer, David Jones. So I'll turn it over to Clerk Tomasic and Lieutenant Trush.
Lieutenant Trush had something to say first.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and residents of the City of Gibraltar. I come before you today to request a ceremonial swearing-in for Officer David Jones. Although Officer Jones has officially sworn in on March 13th, 2025, at City Hall, in order to promptly begin his police training, we would like to now take the opportunity to formally introduce him to the community. Officer Jones brings with him over twenty years of law enforcement experience. We are truly fortunate to have such a seasoned professional join the Gibraltar Police Department. His extensive experience will be an invaluable asset to our team and will strengthen our efforts to ensure the safety and well-being of the community. Thank you.
I, David Jones.
I, David Jones.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of a police officer.
Of a police officer.
In and for the City of Gibraltar.
In and for the City of Gibraltar.
Wayne County, Michigan.
Wayne County, Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
If I may, I'm not all that big on public speaking, but I did prepare something just briefly. I just want to say that I am honored to serve this great city and its people. As both an officer and a parent with kids in the local school district, I am deeply invested in the safety and the well-being of this community. Thank you for trusting me with this responsibility. I look forward to protecting and giving back. I appreciate the support of my family, my colleagues, and everyone who made this possible. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. We'd love to give a photo, Officer Jones, so if you don't mind coming back up here, we'll get a photo. Lieutenant, we'll have the family feel free to join us as well. May I get a wonderful resident who's willing to take a photo with my phone?
Woody's a good photographer.
Woody, you got this? Thank you. Love you. Come up here, council, if we can all stand. Congratulations. Thank you so much. I want to thank Lieutenant Trush for the great words to open up. Officer Jones, we are so incredibly grateful and excited to have you on this team and a part of our community, and just incredibly grateful for your service. Family first. It's time to go to dinner. Please enjoy.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
The extended family gets to go, too?
Well, council, department heads, and members of the community, great moment for us in welcoming new Officer Jones to our amazing department. With that, I will turn over to our consent agenda. Council, in your packet, you have items A through E. Item A, bill's reference number eighteen. Item B, payroll nine four six and nine four seven. Item C, city council minutes of three ten twenty-five. Item D, planning commission minutes of two eighteen twenty-five. And item E, DDA minutes of two eighteen twenty-five. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda items A through E?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Second by Valentine. Council, any discussion? Katie, please call roll.
Mayor.
Yes.
Schumate.
Yes.
Valentine.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
Cox.
Yes.
McNabb.
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, we have our communications for which there is none this evening, and that will turn over to my report for you, council. Council, I have items A through C. We'll take them one at a time. First item is item A on appointments. As you can see in your packet, we have two items for you to consider. The first is local officers' compensation commission. I want to thank the three applications received. Council, you see the three applications are captured within your packet. I am recommending appointment of Marcia Cosmore to be appointed to the local officers' compensation commission. As you can see here, you also have Debbie McGraw and Michelle Ashley for consideration. So council will be looking for a motion for that appointment to the local officers' compensation commission.
Motion to appoint Marcia Cosmore, Debbie McGraw, and Michelle Ashley to the compensation.
Just correction, Councilman Valentine, we only need one appointment here.
Okay. Motion to appoint Marcia Cosmore.
There's a motion to appoint Marcia Cosmore. Is there a second for that motion? Not hearing a second for that motion. Council, any considerations you'd like to put forth for these three applicants?
I'll just make a couple of comments.
Yeah, please.
On my thoughts of this. You know, having new interest or people reaching out to be on these commissions, right? We need to engage that new interest or new people wanting to, you know, either get involved in, I think, recycling old people that have been involved with it. I think that limits the opportunities for new people, so that's going to be my comments on where my stance is.
Were these, was this posted anywhere? Was it brought out? Did we? I don't recall it from last meeting.
It was posted on Facebook for a member.
I think, Councilman Cox, I don't disagree, and I think the good news is our current administration, we've had a wealth of individuals coming forth, including our nine commission members for Parks and Rec and other, obviously, seats that we filled, so absolutely agree with the sentiment. My logic and why I proposed Marcia, Debbie would be my second recommendation to you all, was both Marcia and Debbie bringing experience and expertise. I think that is important for the position at hand. Just to kind of double-click on that, obviously with Marcia, not only is she a former council member, but she's done extensive work on the Gibraltar School District School Board, thirteen years, in addition to her three years on council. And Debbie has experience, not only professional experience brought to the table, but previous experience in board of review participation. So my logic and recommendation was really those two as the top priority for the reasons of the experience put forth in their applications, but open to whatever appointment council so chooses, but my recommendation would be one, Marcia, two, Debbie.
Just a kind of compromised thought is maybe we announce it today at the meeting, because I think there's a fair amount of people that are not on Facebook that might not hear about those things, but if we know that there's an opening for that word of mouth, we get the opportunity to speak it out there, but also city's website and the minutes from this meeting could list that. Just a thought.
How many openings are there on the compensation committee? Just one?
One opening. Katie, anything that would be consideration for timeline purposes? Do you have any sort of deadline you want council to be aware of?
No. Typically, the meeting is held in April.
Okay.
And that's just what it's usually held. There's nothing in the charter that says it has to be held in April. So if we got it out there and made an appointment at their next meeting, we would still have time to have that meeting in April, so.
That sounds like a great plan to me. Well, members of public listening, consider this your notice. We'd love to see an application come through. Obviously, our city clerk takes applications. You can come in, City Hall, obviously, her contact is posted on our website. Obviously, you can refer to any of the Facebook posts that have already been put up in regards to her contact as well, but I think that's a good plan, so we can welcome any additional applicants, march towards the next council meeting, and make sure those applicants are included in your packet.
Could we give, if, I don't know who the appropriate person who would know this, but a short little blurb as to what the roles and responsibilities of somebody on the Officers' Compensation Committee is responsible for?
They review and determine the salaries of the elected officials.
Okay.
Great. Any further discussion on that topic? Next appointment, council, in your packet, I included, Councilman Valentine has served as our Parks and Recreation Commission Council Liaison. Just want to thank you for that service. He expressed his interest in January 28th in written format to step away from that liaison responsibility, but wanted to respect the timeline, which is to have a new Parks and Rec Director who's sitting in front of us, as well as allow the commission members to come up to speed. Now we're sitting with nine, so Councilman Valentine went as far as, obviously, sitting and taking minutes and showing people the ropes in the last meeting, but what I'm asking council to consider today, I've had some discussions with some of you, is to consider appointing Councilman Walden to take the responsibility of Parks and Recreation Liaison, which would obviously then allow Councilman Valentine to step away from that commitment. So council will be looking for a motion to appoint Councilman Walden as the Parks and Recreation Council Liaison.
I'd make the motion for Councilman Walden.
Got a motion by McNabb. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Valentine? Sorry, Cox? Great. Any discussion on that matter? I, Councilman Valentine, your last ask for that role will be to make sure Councilman Walden can be brought up to speed, so if you don't mind just working with him offline to make sure he has the keys to success. Appreciate that. All right, whenever you're ready, Katie, I'll have you call roll.
Valentine.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
Cox.
Yes.
McNabb.
Yes.
Mulnar.
Yes.
Schumate.
Yes. Councilman Walden, thank you so much for serving in that capacity. Councilman Valentine will bring you up to speed. All right, next one on my list, item B is going to be administrative updates. Short and sweet here, but I wanted to bundle everything up per our last council discussion. Council, if you recall, at our last meeting, the Rotary Club had expressed interest in potentially putting forth a offer to purchase a plot of land over by Dairy Queen. I know we talked about it, and there's a couple of actions that we took away from that discussion. One action was to follow up with information around valuation, so that is included in your packet. I'll call attention to the aerial map, which shows the plots being referred to, and then if you flip to the following pages, there's two of them, you'll see that our assessor provided the current value of said plots. So there'll be two values, first page and second page. With that, I had asked him a couple of questions, which were other follow-ups. One was, as a 501(c)(3), what are the tax considerations for said plots? What the assessor guided me was the 501(c)(3) would have a right to submit for not having to pay taxes on the property if they were to purchase it, but again, there's a process that happens with that. The second thing I asked was an obvious question, which is, well, you're giving me value determinants. How does that relate to, like, a formal appraisal being performed? Our assessor said that this value is obviously taking a collective set of market data to put forth the value you see on those two pages for those plots respectfully. He said it's probably one of the more unbiased ways to determine valuations for those that purchase homes. Appraisals might be influenced by other factors, so this is, I would say, unbiased, assessor-driven value perspective in the numerics you see in your pages. So council, I've not had any further discussions with any representatives from Rotary. Obviously, I brought to you the initial appetite for them to potentially explore or purchase the plots, but wanted to follow up that information and open up for any discussion.
So a thought that I had after our last meeting was because it was a plot of property that could potentially be tax-exempt, was rather than selling it, offering a land lease, you know, a long-duration land lease to where we keep long-term rights to it if there is a need to grow our pump facility, you know, for our sewage next door there. If that grows into a need, we retain some ability to pull from it, you know, should we have to, but also it allowed us to get a, you know, maybe a land lease could come in at the cost of whatever the annual tax value might be and still receive an income from it for the city. So just something I thought of that may be a long-term negotiable land lease.
I think it's a great suggestion.
I agree.
Council, any further perspective on the topic at hand? I might recommend at least one council member and I have a follow-up discussion with applicable members of Rotary, just to have an exploration dialogue around some of these opportunities, and then we can bring it back to council accordingly if there's still interest.
Yeah, I'm happy to sit in if you want me to.
Yeah, why don't we team up and do that?
Yeah.
Any further guidance? I didn't mention it, because I had shared it previously, but Finance Director McEwen gave us all the financial backdrop of this, meaning what was paid and what was still owed to the land fund, so you'll have that reference point in your packet as well. All right, Councilman Mulnar and I will take that follow-up, and we'll come back to council with any updates. Council, next item and my last item on this evening's agenda for my report is our strategic priorities update. As promised, just want to make sure we continue to update key items in bold. You also received via Clerk Tomasic an email I had forwarded to council related to some work on the leak detection front, seemingly good news, and I'll have City Administrator Blackburn comment on that tonight. So let's start with the first one. Again, I'll just hit on some of the highlights in bold. Water loss audit via Benesh and flood control. We already discussed that we had replaced the two meters that were capturing water usages previously undetected. We're waiting for those meter reads in April to understand the financial element of those observations, so trending positive. We're waiting for the numerics to support where we're at moving forward. But the leak detection, as we mentioned, you had all had hired Benesh to take a look at the leak detection. That began on January 27th, and there's some observations that have already came in. So City Commissioner Blackburn, you want to give a high-level synopsis on that, please?
Okay, I got a communication from Benesh today. That's why it's not in your packet. They've completed, for the most part, the leak detection. They did over twenty-three miles of water main leaking. There's two areas they want to go back just to double-check, because they couldn't tell whether it was a water leak or water usage at that time. So in the next day or two, they're going to go back, and they're going to go a different time than what they went last time, just to double-check to make sure that water wasn't being used at that time when they were doing some sounding. They did find two leaks last week. Both leaks were fixed last week. One was on Carlson's property, which they believe used to be a water line, a water service to a drinking fountain that they had out in the middle of the field. They got that turned off, so that's not leaking. That had a sizable leak. That was a three-inch copper pipe that was leaking, and after they fixed that, if you looked on Whammer, we have seen a significant drop in water usage just on that one. And the other one that they fixed was on West Jefferson. We had a gate valve that was leaking, and it was leaking right into the marsh, so it never made, both leaks never made it to the surface. You can never tell that they were leaking. Both those were taken care of. They were spotted last week, and they were taken care of last week. And then on...
Nice.
It's great news.
Worth it.
Fantastic investment.
The two areas that are in question, where are they located? She didn't give me the exact location. She just said there are two areas they wanted to double-check. If you could, find out and let me know what that is via email, please. Yep. So the meter reads, next meter reads will be first week in April, so we should get a good handle on what kind of, what the water meters, what the replacement of the water meter has done for water loss, but being that these two leaks were detected last week and they were fixed last week, to get a better sense, it'll be, it won't be until July, and then we can compare April to July and see what kind of water loss we got from there. But so far, that's, and then Benesh's next step is to do a water audit, which will be coming up here within the next few weeks.
Thank you for the synopsis. Phenomenal news. We have meter replacements, which are capturing water that was previously not being captured. We have loss, two leaks identified, potentially others that are now no longer leaking, so you can imagine we're on a path to success in context of those observations, so just thank you to Benesh, thank you to City Commissioner Blackburn, and to the team that came together. I would suggest you take the Benesh communication, feed that into the Infrastructure Advisory Committee discussion this Thursday, beyond just sending it to Councilman Cox, so that everybody's got purview to that information.
Yeah, we are. I'll forward it to all council members also.
Great. All right, that was topic number one. If you continue to scroll through, I'll just hit on the bold updates. Flood control. So a couple of things were done recently, and I want to flag that for you. We've hit any party that will listen and officials, including senators, Congresswoman, to make sure we put forth our budget requests. Two priority items were really in focus for us. One was Middle Gibraltar Bridge over Frank and Poet Drain, which has been poor critical condition as a main artery in and out of the city. The other was our outfall valves, pumps, and other flood control investments. So we're beaten on the doors for funding with our officials. We hope to receive funding from our officials, and I want to make sure I flag that for you this evening. Most recently, Senator Peters received our request on March 17th. Scrolling down further on the infrastructure improvement front, City Administrator Blackburn obviously gave an update on the Collins Engineering Report related to the Horse Island Bridge. Infrastructure Advisory Committee this Thursday will double-click on that topic, and I know we've received some additional information to consider for that discussion. On the lead line replacement, bids received, and City Administrator is working with Infrastructure Advisory Committee again this Thursday to review information with reins and bidders. You'll recall in our last meeting, council awarded Fishbeck for the Western Efferson Water Main, so obviously a critical improvement leveraging the funds we received from Senator Peters and Congresswoman Dingell. Pump station, that construction is complete, so put the dollars to work. Thank you for pulling through that project to completion. Moving on, on the parking lots that we discussed previously, that'll be on Infrastructure Advisor Committee agenda again this Thursday. Roofs, I know John Sont and other parties in Infrastructure Advisory Committee are working Our zoning ordinance committee has been full force. We had our last meeting on January 28th. City planners driving that activity. Gas inventory, you'll see that's still in flight via City Administrator Blackburn and his work with Corrigan. One thing I'll flag is we need to make sure we prioritize the city planner RFP. So that's next on our list, so I need to make sure that we do that in April. Obviously, Jane Dixon has been serving in that capacity. I think she's doing a great job, but we need to RFP that work. So I'm just flagging that for you this evening as the last item. And then obviously, you'll see on the last page, the actions that were recently taken, including appointment of our Parks and Rec Director amongst others. So in general, I feel good about where we're at. I feel like we're advancing all the priorities, so I want to make sure I provide these bold updates for you. Any questions or comments? Great. That will conclude my report, and I'd like to turn it over to council reports. Councilman Valentine, this will be your last time giving the Parks and Recreation Commission, and then we'd like to hear from you about 33th District Court.
I don't have a report from the Recreation Commission, but the 33rd District Court is in the process of beginning their court work program again. I know I forwarded that information to Dorothy because the Verification Committee used to use them extensively, and I lost my email to her, so I can't recall exactly what the process is to get them to come to the city.
They have been coming to the city.
Okay.
The work program meets here three Saturdays a month.
Okay, that's all I had.
Awesome. Any questions for Councilman Valentine? Councilwoman Wood is not here with us this evening. Any questions for Councilwoman Wood that you'd like documented? Councilman Cox, talk to us about planning at DDA.
Okay, on the planning commission side, we received a resignation from one of our commissioners, so that's going to be on your list, Mayor, for an appointment. I'd like to thank Maria Mendoza-Bach for all her efforts and for volunteering and being a part of the commission for as long as she was. So on the DDA side of it, we received and filed the 2024-2025 budget, and under new business, we, the DDA approved $5,000 towards the side-by-side for police and fire. So that's my report.
Thank you, Councilman Cox. Any questions for Councilman Cox? Councilman McNabb talked to us about waterways in ADW.
Okay, waterways, we have our, keep our fingers crossed for this weed harvester, Mayor, and Blackburn is still on the table. It hasn't gone away yet at this point. I'm going to have to ask for a motion to cover some of the taxes on the buoy markers that were ordered. It went above our cost, and I was asked by Mr. Blackburn to make a motion to raise the price of that and lighting for the channel markers. I have no report for the ADW, but that's where I'm at at this point.
Awesome, yeah. On the weed harvester front, just counsel for your full awareness, so make sure you have the communications. We continue to push on our county partners. Commissioner Garza made a push on the county officials affiliated, including the legal council. If you recall, we've had meetings, we've requested action, we've provided quotes and specs. So I made another push via an email thread with an updated quote since our last meeting was December, to make sure that accurately affected the current pricing and consideration.
There was a change made in the order, and there's another person jumping on board where to help push it through. So it sounds like it's going to happen.
So it seems like it's in flight. Commissioners pushing heavily, requesting immediate action, so we'll keep pushing. But Councilman McNabb, thank you. Do you need that motion this evening for the buoy markers or...
That's... What do you think, Michael? Do we need to make a motion for that? It's like 40 bucks or 140.
The previous motion was to buy six buoy markers for up to $1,800. The place that was approved to give them from, we do not have in account with them, so we'll have to pay the sales tax on it, and it comes to $1,844 and some change. We would need a motion to increase $1,845 to $1,845, just to cover the tax on it, because I can't purchase it being over the amount that City Council approved.
Why aren't we tax exempt based on the city's standpoint of it? I'm just curious as to why.
You have to fill out a credit application. It has to be approved by corporate, and we can do it. It might, it might take a little while to do it. Depends on how fast they move on it. It's just the fact that if you want them right now, we'll have to pay the sales tax. If you don't mind waiting a month or so, we can go ahead and fill out a credit application. We don't use that business too much, so that's up to you guys to see.
Let me throw out a practical consideration here. Obviously, on principle, we should not be paying tax. The effort and timeline, to me, would probably cost more than $45 and would obviously push the... So I just want you to weigh that, right? We can obviously go through this process, take a month, but it's going to be probably more hours of time than $45 for the tax.
Not going to be using them that often.
So I'm just throwing it out there, but counsel, up to you. Finance Director McEwen, you look like you have something you wanted to say.
Help me out here.
I was just going to say, I don't think it takes that long to fill out the tax exempt form in a credit app, though.
It depends on how, how long it takes them to approve it.
Yeah.
So let's do this. Let's do this. Why don't you go ahead and push for that tax exempt form by our next council meeting? Give us an update, City Administrator Blackburn, and then we can make a decision accordingly, if that sounds good to you, Councilman McNabb.
Yeah, you save 1,800 bucks, right?
Does that sound like a plan? Do you have any...
Yeah, just if we need a motion to, if we get bogged down just by the darn things, if we need a motion, you know, I'm happy to provide a motion, but definitely, if it's a matter of filling it out, I know we fill them out all the time. If it's a matter of filling out, and then it's a three-minute thing, I know it might take a couple of weeks for a response if they have to go to Omaha or whatever to get their answer. But if we find out that we're getting bogged down on that and we just want to get them so we can get them in, and if we need a motion for that, I'm happy to do that. I'd hate for this to go another two weeks or four weeks or six weeks.
What did we do in the past when we...
Sorry, Karen, I'll speak up.
In the past, we've ordered this stuff or just got it, just like lighting, it's very important. It's our responsibility in this age of broader to make sure these, these channel markers are lit. It's actually, it's our issue.
I'm hearing that it should only take a few minutes to get this form done, so City Administrator Blackburn, let's get that form done, please, immediately. And then by the next council meeting, if there's a bogged-down process or a delayed timeline, we could just motion for that $45. Sound good?
Sounds perfect.
All right. Any other questions for Councilman McNabb?
With respect to waterways in a broader sense, I know that a few years back, Cindy used to, Lear used to give out some no-wake signs. I don't know how we went about procuring them, or if those were donated by something, or if we, if we went about purchasing them, but she would hand out, you know, handful of them every year for the no-wake signs that people that lived on the canals could post in their backyards on their docks, just to give a nice friendly reminder to make sure that we use the waterways without producing significant wake. So I thought that was valuable.
Seeing them over in the building here.
Yeah. Oh, we got some here?
I, yeah, along with the stop signs and stuff. If we can probably purchase them.
Put stop signs up.
Well, I mean, we're all the signs that are in the building over. We may be able to purchase them.
Yeah.
At the same time we do them.
Yeah, might be something that we look at. Well, we'll check our stock then, see if we got some, because that'd be kind of cool to...
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah, because there are complaints of people coming in to the bay and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Wide open.
So it's wide open is good until April 1st.
Right.
All right, sounds like we'll check inventory. Good flag on that. Any other questions or comments for Councilman McNabb? Councilman Mulner, floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. I think the, a couple of things that I want to just touch on real briefly is, I'm hoping that, and I should have mentioned this to you when we talked briefly beforehand, but our Recreation Director, Austin Reynolds, if you've got a schedule for music in the park, if not, maybe next meeting, we can share that at your report time. It's something I wanted to make sure that we could get out on our agenda. Another thing that, I know that Mr. Sont, John sent in a very nice, couple-of-page bullet point list of items, construction, maintenance-type-related issues that we've all discussed at the infrastructure meetings. I know, Mr. Blackburn, you've got a meeting scheduled towards the end of this month, I think, for the Infrastructure Committee. I think I seen the email on that.
This Thursday at 4:00.
This Thursday, 4:00 PM, the next Infrastructure Committee meeting. And thank you, Mr. Sont, for putting that together. It's short, concise, and it's to the point of things that we need to start checking off. I think we've only got about, about three of them really checked off, and there's some low-hanging fruit on there that we could probably just make ourselves feel a little bit more productive. We could probably take a few of those and prioritize them so that we can, you know, feel a little bit better about some of the stuff that's to do out there.
Yep, well said.
Couple more things. We have, I know I've mentioned it multiple times, but the August, or April 5th, April 5th, Saturday, April 5th is our opening of the waterways this year with the tiller steer aluminum boat race. Yeah, and so if anybody was curious as to what this trophy was here, this, and we can pass it down if you like.
That's amazing.
So this really isn't a race in a sense of a who's fastest. This is more of a fun run, and it should be a really good time, but it is, it is more of, you know, aluminum boats out there and everybody just having a good time, and we'll take safety precautions into mind and make sure that we have a... Yeah, well, you're not going to win that.
Oh, well.
But it should be a really good time, and I hope that we can go there and enjoy that on Saturday, April 5th, and whoever's boat is dressed up the nicest is probably going to win this, this 18-hour-long, 3D-printed trophy. So some serious work went into this, and thank you, thank you, Tim, for making that. Should be a good time. And then, and then another race that we have is the Run Kayak Race that's in, it's going to be Sunday, June 8th. We do have, that is, that is the kayak race around Hall Island, and it'll be the sixth year that we've done that for the benefit of curing HHT, which is supporting one of our residents who've had multiple family members diagnosed with HHT, which is a rare brain disease, and the research is fast coming along in addressing these, and it's partially because of organizations that put together their, their efforts to fund this. We don't put a tremendous amount of funding towards it, but we do bring a little bit of awareness, and we have a really good time. So that is the morning, 8:00 AM or 7:30 AM on Sunday, June 8th. Please mark your calendars. It should be a wonderful time. Your Honor, that's all I have.
Awesome. Any questions for Councilman Mulner? All right, last but not least, Councilman Walden, and you'll have a Recreation Commission note next to your name in the next meeting.
Yeah, so I have no report this week, but potentially next week I will have, or next meeting I'll have some sort of recreation report. Austin, I would like to get with you at the end of this meeting, just to kind of touch base with you, okay?
Awesome. Any questions for Councilman Walden? All right, that will close out our council reports, and we'd like to turn it over to our Parks and Recreation Director.
Mayor, counsel, you doing good? All right. So for anyone watching on Facebook or anywhere else, I would just like to start off with introducing myself a little bit. Maybe if you haven't, you know, seen any of the other council meetings that I was a part of, whether that be the interview or the hiring. My name is Austin Reynolds, and I'm the new Parks and Rec Director. I've updated my email on the City of Gibraltar website, so that's updated if you want to contact me there, or if you want to come meet me in person. I would suggest right now, 8:00 to 4:00, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, my door is always open to any, any resident that wants to talk to me. So right now, for my report, I've got the Easter event. We're still putting the Easter event on. I've seen a couple of questions on, hey, is the Easter event happening? Yes, it is. Marshmallow drop, all that's happening. April 19th, 10:00 AM, we're accepting bike donations to the Gibraltar Community Center. When I'm there, those hours that I just listed, I'll be there, take any bikes that you guys want to donate. That'd be, that'd be great. We really need those. We'll have more information about the Easter event shortly. We're going to have a flyer out with more information soon. That is all I have for my update.
Well, thank you for all that you're doing on the on-ramp and for the reinforcement introduction and for the availability for the residents. I'm sure they will greatly appreciate that. Counsel, any questions for Parks and Recreation Director?
Are you also accepting cash donations?
I think we're accepting any donations that anyone wants to make towards the Easter event.
That's a yes.
Baskets, yep. Candy baskets, anything like that. Any donations that anyone wants to make towards the Easter event, we're taking them.
Really appreciate you. Thank you. All right, toss it over to our city attorney.
Thank you. The family fun time lawsuit was filed and the process of getting them served, and depending on when that happens, they'll have 21 days to respond. If they don't respond, then I'll seek a default, and if they do respond, we'll handle accordingly. That's the update I have.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for our city attorney? Appreciate you. City Administrator Blackburn, floor is yours.
All right. First thing on the agenda I have is to approve the sick time and longevity payout for Gerald Harrison pursuant to the Teamsters contract. The payout breakdown is on the attachment given, and I'm looking for approval.
Make that motion.
A motion by Mulner, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Cox, any discussion? Katie, please call roll.
Walden?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Back to you, City Administrator.
All right. Next thing I have is pass stormwater resolution for Gibraltar self-storage. Little background, Wayne County emailed the previous administration back in September 2023 for this. The ball was dropped by the city. The owners of Gibraltar Self-Storage have met every standard that our city engineers are looking for. They have met all the standards with Wayne County. This is, should be the last and final piece, piece that they need to get all their bond money back and to close this, this construction out. And I'm asking for approval to approve this resolution.
The stormwater operating requirement is, or maintenance is now within the city and not within the property owner of that location? Do we have an agreement with the property owner that they're going to maintain the...
We have an agreement with them that has been filed with the Register of Deeds that was filed in June of last year.
Okay, so this is a formality to close out the project based on Wayne County?
Yes, Wayne County is holding bond money from them for the project, and they need this so they can return his bond money to him.
Any issues with this city attorney?
Yeah, my next question is, Anthony, have you read...
Yeah, so this was, I think the resolution was passed several months ago on this, and that was recorded with the Register of Deeds, which controls all of it. So this is from Wayne County to his point, trying to close it out now.
But we have a maintenance agreement with the owner that they're going to maintain the facility.
Yeah, it's recorded on the property.
Council will be looking for a motion to approve the stormwater resolution for Gibraltar self-storage.
Motion to approve the water resolution.
Motion by Cox, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mulner, any discussion? Katie, please call roll.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Anything else for City Administrator?
Just one little thing. I should have mentioned earlier with these, the two leaks that Benesh had found, our average water usage was .20 to .23 million gallons of water a day. Since those two leaks were fixed, it dropped down to roughly around .12 to .13 million gallons of water a day. Just a little heads up, it's, it's in here, though, in this email that I'll forward to you guys, but that's just some of the water loss that was found with these two leaks.
Incredibly significant. Thank you.
Did they offer a percentage of where we're at right now with water loss based on...
No, we won't know that until we do the next round of meter reads, and then we'll compare our data to what GLWA charges us. We'll see how much, what our reading was that they charge us, and when we compile all the readings from the city, we'll, we can determine our loss from there.
Thank you for the update, City Administrator, and look forward to seeing that come to council and the committee. Any questions for City Administrator Blackburn? Clerk Tomasic?
Thank you. Just a reminder, if anyone's interested in running for local office this year, the offices of Mayor, Clerk, Treasurer, and three councils... year, the offices of mayor, clerk, treasurer, and three council seats will be on the local ballot this, this November, and possibly a primary in August, depending on how many people run. packets and petitions to run are available on my office. They'll be due on Tuesday, April 22nd by 4:00 PM. And also, to sum up a couple of points from earlier, we have some vacancies for commissions to fill. So to sum up, we have one vacancy for the local officers' compensation commission, one vacancy for planning and DDA, and two, two or three vacancies still on the recreation commission. So if anyone's interested in joining any of those, feel free, fill out a application.
Well said, Clerk Tomasic, and hope to see a lot of members putting theirselves forth for our upcoming election. Any questions for Clerk Tomasic? Treasurer Fonti is not with us this evening, so we will turn it over to Finance Director McEwen.
Oh, boy. Okay. So the first thing I have is the third quarter budget revision. I usually do first mid-year, third quarter, and the fourth quarter. So basically, you look at the current year's budget five times when you adopt it, when we do the first quarter revision, the halfway point, third quarter, and then the final. I did this one a little early because at our next meeting, I'm supposed to give you guys kind of a rough draft of the next budget year. So I kind of wanted to keep them separated. So, there is a couple adjustments in general fund. I, at this point, all of our taxes have pretty much essentially came in. So I had to adjust all the tax accounts to reflect what came in, because the only thing that we're going to see is maybe a little bit more personal property, which isn't as large as real property. So I adjusted those. Anything that we didn't receive does go to the county, so we will receive it at some point, hopefully within a year. Sometimes it takes a little bit longer than that. I adjusted a couple other of revenues. Usually it's mostly interest, because I try to be conservative when figuring that out. In the end, we are pulling more from fund balance due to not all of the taxes coming in, as well as the expenses for the forensic audit and other items. Most of the accounts that I did adjust were within their budgets or are currently trending under. General government was a little bit higher. That's in part due to the new software and the forensic audit is in that account. Parks and Rec, this is our first year tracking utilities under Parks and Rec instead of tracking the Parks and Rec utilities with everything else. So it's kind of like a figuring out phase, I guess you could say. So, I did adjust that up a little bit. At this point, we're looking at 2.1 million approximately, moving into 2025, 2026 for our fund balance. So that's still pretty healthy. The main one that I did adjust out of the other ones would be DDA. I kind of changed it, instead of water main line to 2023 DDA bond, so that we could track those expenses a little bit better that we're using the bond for. And then also, anything else that had taxes collected in it, I did adjust those down. Fund balances are listed at the end of general fund, motor vehicle major, motor vehicle local, DDA, cable, and water. I don't know if anybody's got any questions, if they want a better walkthrough, anything like that.
I appreciate the breakdown, thoroughness, and everything you're doing, Finance Director McEwen. So no questions for me. Council, any questions?
No, the color coding makes it pretty easy to thumb through quicker. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
I appreciate our department heads for holding their fiduciary responsibility and managing their budgets. So thank you.
Yeah. And now a side note, big shout out to Katie, because we're tracking the election grants on the side this time. And she's practically pulled in exactly what had to come out. So, good job.
Let's go, Katie.
Good work. So I would need a motion to approve the third quarter budget adjustments.
Council, do we have a motion to approve third quarter budget adjustments?
Motion to approve.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by McNabb. Any further discussion on this matter?
Sorry, one, one thing, and that's the miscellaneous expenses. Is that, is that something that I could maybe stop by later on this week and we could take a glance at, at what those?
Sure. Is it in a certain fund that you're looking at?
Yes, in the?
Expenditures.
Yeah, the 14.
Page 14. So, let's see, that would be?
The hauling?
For the solid waste.
Yeah.
Um, yep, yep. It looks like we've spent 650 in that. And then I adjusted that just to kind of balance out the budget.
Okay. Oh, so, all right. I'm looking at the wrong line item then. I'm sorry.
Oh, no. Not a problem. I'd rather you ask questions than not, because at least then I feel like, you know, it's getting looked at and.
Any further discussion on this matter?
But anything that, if you want like a further breakdown, you are more than free to come into my office at any point. You can send me an email and I can email it to you. Like if you're not around during those times, I'm very good at answering emails. So.
I'll echo that. All right. Thank you. Katie, we'll have you call roll whenever you are ready.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Back to you.
Okay. This is the annual employee pension contributions for the fiscal year 2024, 2025. These are what was determined based on our actuarial studies. So these are the amounts of the actuaries determined that we need to contribute to all of these funds. And I am bringing this forth to get approval to send out these checks and get these amounts paid to them. Thankfully, I have another pension board member here too right now. So, yes, I would be looking for approval for all of these.
Council will be looking for a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Got a motion by McNabb. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mulner?
Safety and retiree.
Any discussion?
It's three.
These.
It's the health, the general employee's pension, and the police.
Safety officers.
Yep.
These all match exactly what we planned for?
Um, they got adjusted as soon as I found it out.
Got it.
So, they weren't exact on the first budget, but the first quarter, I knew the amounts and had them adjusted.
Cool.
Except for the retiree healthcare, because that's always 30.
Got it.
Any further discussion? Katie, please call roll.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Amy, anything else from you?
Um, we did get our new software. So Chelsea and I have been working through like getting a process kind of hammered out to get it to all the department heads. And it's been, it's been a good process. I, I don't know why we didn't do it a long time ago. It helps with budget and everything. So.
Is this, this process, or this software allows us to assign purchase orders, to purchases, to be able to track them?
Yes. So like, as soon as I got these numbers, I could have assigned it immediately, and then we could track it all the way through.
And it stays with it all the way, yeah.
Yeah. So it's, it's pretty helpful. Like, we get certain bills that come, and they'll divide it up into five, so we could put it in there. And even though we haven't paid all five, it'll show like this is still due. So, yeah, it's, it's very, very handy.
Awesome.
Yeah. I was in there today and absolutely agree with the sentiment. Seems like everybody's excited about it.
Great.
And that is it for me.
All right. Any questions for Finance Director McEwen? Well, let's turn it over to Lieutenant Trush and Acting Chief while Chief Bullard is out.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Since the last council meeting, the police department responded to 121 calls for service, wrote nine incident reports, made one arrest, issued 12 traffic citations. The SRO department responded to three juvenile investigations, and there was four detective bureau investigations. In other news, the chief wanted me to pass on that the Adams and Stoflet All Traffic Solutions Study will continue for another two weeks. There's two dispatchers that have completed emergency medical dispatch training, and the remaining dispatchers are currently in their second week of that training course. Detective Sergeant Robinson is in his second month at Staff Command Class. And Officer Dan Sampson will begin training with Sergeant Seifert at Carlson High School near the end of April. And Officer Sampson will continue to train with Sergeant Seifert till the end of the school year. Lastly, the chief wanted me to pass on that the city's received six fire department, or fire chief applications, and that those interviews will commence in the following weeks.
Fantastic.
That's my report.
So, just one quick question. So I, we fortunate to hire Officer David Jones. And I, I see that he's got some training here for the next, next month or two till he gets out on his own. At which time, will he have the opportunity to get his EMT training?
Yeah, I believe the EMT class starts the beginning of April, and I think it ends, I think Sergeant Joe Schaefer is going to talk about that, but I think the class starts in April and ends at the end of July.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions for Lieutenant Trush?
Tim, you may not have the answer to this question. Do you know if Chief Bullard received any correspondence from CSX about the railroad tracks and the repairs?
I do not, but I, I can pass that along.
Okay. And then one other question I have, it might be a question for the council as far as the six fire chief applicants. Are we relying on Chief Bullard to hold interviews for that? Or are we having some sort of hiring committee for that? Just because if we're going to bring in a new, new fire chief to the city, it might be best to broaden that out versus just having it contained to one department. Just, just my suggestion.
I think it's a fair piece of feedback. Obviously, as our Director of Public Safety, Chief Bullard is driving the process, but I think we should have a discussion with him when he returns regarding council's visibility and involvement in said process.
Absolutely. Okay.
Because the position's not a chartered position, it's a 6.18 in our charter, it falls underneath him as a deputy position.
Correct.
And wouldn't necessarily be our role unless we inserted ourselves for a particular reason there.
Okay. I, I just wasn't sure how it worked with that. So.
Any other questions for Lieutenant Trush? All right. Thank you for representing today, and thanks for all you're doing in our department. Sergeant Schaefer, we're going to turn it over to you for the fire department report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. During the period since the last meeting, the fire departments responded for 42 calls of service, 38 EMS calls, four fire calls, three of those being auto aids to Flat Rock and Woodhaven. We have given away zero calls in that timeframe. Since the report was submitted, we've ran an additional 12 calls, totaling 64 calls this month alone. Two busy days we had. One day was 11 calls in 19 hours. Another day was seven calls in about 10 hours. We do have training coming up next Wednesday at, well, this Wednesday at the college. Four hours of burn training to get the firefighters some more training on hose operations and things like that. We also went last Wednesday for four hours, so get to rotate people through. Rockwood is sending personnel with us this week, so we get to train with them, which is a good thing, always training with our neighbors. Firefighter Johnson just completed his instructor course. He's waiting on his test results to see if he passed that. I am currently finishing my Fire Officer II, and Intern Chief Simon is starting her officer program as well. Let's see, as far as an action item, there was three quotes submitted for turnout gear. One from Phoenix Safety Outfitters, one from Allied Fire, and one from McQueen. Sitting down with Chief Simon and discussing this, we understand McQueen is a, and as of the quotes, is a pretty expensive option. It's $3,500 for the turnout gear. This is to replace aged-out turnout gear per NFPA standards. It's reached its 10-year life, and we need to get in-service gear for our firefighters. McQueen also reached out to us after giving us the quote and wants to give us opportunities. They know our year is aging, some of our air packs and turnout gear is getting to its life expectancy. They would like to start looking for regional grants for us to get on to lower the cost impact on the city. That is why we personally would like to go with McQueen. Ultimately, it is up to you, but we are looking for a motion to approve the purchase of this turnout gear tonight.
Council, you have the, this is the addition in our approval of agenda section. You have the description. For anybody that didn't print out a copy or doesn't have it in front of you, I'm glad to pass it along, but you have the description here, building on what Sergeant Schaefer had mentioned.
Yeah, I'd like to take a glance at it.
There you go.
So, I, to chime in on the side, I attended the department head meeting, okay? And at that, I think that meeting was on the 17th?
The 19th.
19th, okay. So during that meeting, they had only received two quotes, McQueen and I believe the Allied Fire sales. They had reached out to three at that point, but hadn't heard from the third supplier. I believe that the last one, Phoenix, that comes in and has a now lower price than McQueen, that was furnished on the 19th, so I have to assume that was received after our meeting. I don't know if this criteria fall, I have to assume it meets the specifications across the board. All right? So I just want to offer that information. We were geared, I was geared towards talking about just accepting two prices, because the third vendor did not respond, but now- well, this Wednesday at the college. Four hours of burn training to get the firefighters some more training on hose operations and things like that. We also went last Wednesday for four hours, so get to rotate people through. Rockwood is sending personnel with us this week, so we get to train with them, which is a good thing, always training with our neighbors. Firefighter Johnson just completed his instructor course. He's waiting on his test results to see if he passed that. I am currently finishing my Fire Officer II, and Interim Chief Simon is starting her officer program as well. Let's see, as far as an action item, there were three quotes submitted for turnout gear. One from Phoenix Safety Outfitters, one from Allied Fire, and one from McQueen. Sitting down with Chief Simon and discussing this, we understand McQueen is a, and as of the quotes, is a pretty expensive option. It's $3,500 for the turnout gear. This is to replace aged-out turnout gear per NFPA standards. It's reached its 10-year life, and we need to get in-service gear for our firefighters. McQueen also reached out to us after giving us the quote and wants to give us opportunities. They know our year is aging, some of our air packs and turnout gear is getting to its life expectancy. They would like to start looking for regional grants for us to get on, to lower the cost impact on the city. That is why we personally would like to go with McQueen. Ultimately, it is up to you, but we are looking for a motion to approve the purchase of this turnout gear tonight.
Counsel, you have the, this is the addition in our approval of agenda section. You have the description. For anybody that didn't print out a copy or doesn't have in front of you, I'm glad to pass it along, but you have the description here, building on what Sergeant Schaefer had mentioned.
Yeah, I'd like to take a glance at it.
There you go.
Thank you much.
So I, to chime in on this, I attended the department head meeting, okay, and at that, I think that meeting was on the 17th.
The 19th.
19th, okay. So during that meeting, they had only received two quotes, McQueen and I believe-
It was-
The Allied Fire sales. They had reached out to three at that point, but hadn't heard from the third supplier. I believe that the last one, Phoenix, that comes in and has a now lower price than McQueen, that was furnished on the 19th, so I have to assume that was received after our meeting. I don't know if this criteria fall, I have to assume it meets the specifications across the board, all right? So I just want to offer that information. We were geared, I was geared towards talking about just accepting two prices because the third vendor did not respond, but now that we have it in front of our, for us to review, I'll leave it up to the rest of council to make the decision.
Sergeant Schaefer, who did we previously order turnout gear from? Was it from McQueen?
Our last order for two sets of turnout gear was from McQueen, and then prior to that was Phoenix Safety Outfitters. We have not used Allied before, but I did want to get three quotes for everybody, so I went with two that we have previously used, and then Allied.
So the majority of the turnout gear has been purchased through Phoenix?
That would be correct. That is all of our gear that is aging out in two years.
I know Counsel, and Walden, you obviously have extensive experience in this lane, so your recommendation would be greatly appreciated. Sergeant Schaefer has recommended McQueen. Obviously, you see the price differential.
Yeah, so I have extensive background with Phoenix Outfitters. The only thing that I'm thinking on is depending on the age of the newest gear that has been ordered, as well as, you know, where they want to go further down the road, trying to keep things uniform is super important. So I guess the question is, do we want to try and keep things uniform with going through Phoenix since it's someone that we have previously used, where the majority of our turnout gear's been ordered from, however, it's aging out? Or do we want to consider moving to McQueen? I haven't had any dealings with McQueen, but I have no bad things to say about Phoenix, so my recommendation would be to go with Phoenix, but it really just comes down to uniformity, and do we want everyone to have the same equipment, so.
So Councilman Walden, Sergeant Schaefer, can you please just reinforce to counsel your perspective on McQueen and the trade-offs there and the forward-looking vision in context of-
So yeah, so going forward, Phoenix nor Allied has had discussions with us about going out for grants and putting us on regional grants, and for that, we would be part of grants with other departments. McQueen wants to make us part of that. Obviously, they want our business, but at the same time, that helps the city with cost reduction for the equipment. A standard SCBA is anywhere from $7,000 to $15,000 for one. We have 16 of them. A standard set of turnout gear is about $6,000 for head to toe for all your gear, and we have about 20 sets of those coming up as well. Our newest gear is two years old and is from McQueen. That gear is on McQueen's quote and on Allied's quote is comparable. Phoenix's boots that we went out for, they did not give us a quote for the boots to help in the winter weather, the extra slip protection while we're on scene. I tried to reach out to them again and did not get a response to update the quote for that. But as far as like, we've looked at is grant process, obviously trying to save money for everybody and get the gear we need.
Yeah, and that can be invaluable, you know, especially if you don't have anybody to write those grants for you.
Yeah.
I mean, grants are free money, so if they're offering that, I'm assuming at no cost?
They did not speak about a cost with us yet. I know previous administration of the fire department was offered to say, my opportunities. I'm not sure what the cost would be to the city. Typically, there is a small fee, but it's nowhere near what the gear cost is.
Okay.
Can I say something?
Yeah, please.
You know, when I was on the fire department, we had lots of gear stockpiled. Do you know how much of that gear is past due, past the 10 years?
Currently, we have about 40 sets of gear ready for surplus.
Now, the former fire chief just purchased $4,500 worth of firefighter gear that was not authorized. What's the status of that?
That's currently the gear I wear for a fire. So he purchased my gear and one of their members' gear. That gear is two years old. The rest of the gear is eight years old. We have five sets of reserve gear, so for new hires. We are currently looking at hiring one, went through his interview, and then we have two more to set up interviews for, so they're going to need gear as well.
But you just lost two people, and you're probably going to lose a couple more, it looks like, according to payroll statistics.
All of my extra gear currently includes everybody that has been removed from the roster. As of right now, there's only five sets of extra gear, and that's only good for two more years.
Is all gear standard 10-year time span?
Yes. It's per NFPA standard 1971. Any firefighting gear is 10 years, so from date of manufacture, 10 years plus.
So I think, oh, go ahead, please.
My two cents is, is just that, you know, it's, it's, we're not talking huge dollars right now, but in this, in the small microcosm, it's, one of them's $3,500, the other one's $2,200. So it's a $1,300 difference, which is 30, 34% increase of cost on, on this. And typically, if, if somebody's, you know, throwing something in of value such as helping with grant processes, you know, there's certainly a value to be realized for that. I don't know if it equates 34%, but ultimately, you know, if, if you have experience with them and see that as a value that is worth 34%, and that's what you're recommending, that's what we'll contemplate.
Yeah, and I was just going to add to that, too. So if they're going to throw in the addition of being able to help provide grants, just looking long-term, you know, if you're coming up on expiration of gear, you're going to need more, and you're going to need more soon. And if you have 10, 12 members on the department at, you know, $3,000, $4,000, $5,000 apiece, that's a lot of money that those grants can help. Also to consider, you know, if you're going to go down the road of meeting the second gear requirement, you're going to need two sets of gear for everyone. And again, those grants can really help you. So if you have someone that's going to throw in their time to donate, their time to get you grants and get you that extra money to keep you from putting it, or taking it from your budget, I, I think that's something that you can't really put a price on, so. Yeah, I think at this point, I'll go ahead and make the motion for McQueen.
A motion for the McQueen purchase from Councilman Walden. Is there a second for that? Second from council? No second? Okay. Counsel, did you have a different preference that prevented you from seconding that motion?
You know, I'm, I, yeah, well, no, I, we're definitely going to get some gear. It's the, the hard part that I'm having a hard time swallowing was just that, you know, it's 34% more, and it's, we're going to be, we're linking ourselves to them going forward. So going forward, next time around, you know, if the grants don't cover everything, then, then we're sole sourcing with McQueen from here on out. And so it's not just this purchase, it's going to be, you know, for the next, you know, several thousand, hundreds of thousands of dollars would be more, would be sole sourced, as opposed to, you know, having these folks bid on these.
I don't see it.
I think, unless I'm, unless I'm-
We don't, going forward, we don't have to use McQueen again. This is what their sales rep came to us with, is not that we have to buy it in order to get the, on regional grants, but he is aware of our dated equipment, and he wants to keep us on the, in the line for those grants. With our equipment, we are way overdue on packs. Those are also usually typically a 10-year. Our packs currently are 17 years old. So they work and they function, they're inspected every year. They meet standards for previous packs, but not for newer packs. I understand 34% is a big difference, but like I did say, Phoenix did not give us the same type of boots either. So trying to reduce injuries on scene with people in the winter months is pretty big to us with ice, especially when we spray water and it's negative 10 degrees out. I can go back and get a different quote from them, but I've already tried to reach out once, and they did not respond, so.
If you don't feel that this is going to create a scenario to where we are sole sourcing with them going forward, and we still have the opportunity to, to bid the stuff out, it gives me less consternation.
At no means is there any type of contract or agreement where we'd have to sole source them going forward. I'd go up for bids again. I could even find different companies from the region that could provide.
Okay.
I, yeah, Counsel, I'd ask you, so I think we have Sergeant Schaefer, we have obviously Acting Chief or Interim Chief Simon both coming with this recommendation. We have experienced Councilman Walden, who has experience in fire, making a motion for that. I would ask that we consider revisiting that motion.
Yeah, I have no problem seconding Justice's original motion there.
Second by Molnar. So we have a motion by Walden to purchase the McQueen as proposed. We have a second by Molnar. Is there any further discussion on this matter? Katie, whenever you're ready, we'll have you call roll.
Valentine.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
Cox.
Yes.
McNabb.
Yes.
Molnar.
Yes.
Schumate.
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you.
That concludes my report.
Yeah, thanks for the, thanks for the explanation. I hate to draw that out, but you know, we're, we're trying to-
No problem.
Make sure our purchases are, are in line with conservative practices.
No problem.
Thank you, Sergeant-
Very well, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant Schaefer, and to the department. Appreciate everything that everybody's doing. Any questions for Sergeant Schaefer? All right. We have no unfinished business. We have no new business, and we have no table and referred items, so I'd like to welcome our public. Are there any members of public that would like to address counsel? And if so, please come to that, state your name and address, and make sure that light is still green. Thank you.
Coming back for the same circle. Dennis Bosmer, 29775 Point Drive. Again, April 11th, it's a Friday, 10:00 AM till 4:00 PM. Going to beat this drum one more time the next meeting, this is coming up. We got a decent amount of interaction and volunteers to donate blood, and if anyone is eligible and wants to donate blood, you can call 1-800-RED-CROSS. That's the actual number. I want to look that up and say that publicly. So one, it's 800-RED-CROSS, and it's 800-733-2767. Or you can go to AmericanRedCross.org and schedule an appointment. My email is bosmer@me.com. You can contact me, B-O-I-S-M-I-E-R@me.com. I can schedule your appointment for you. I'm glad to help anybody out. A gentleman owns a liquor store, signed up through me. I was really proud to do that for him. One of the gas attendants signed up. It's very exciting to me. It's, it's a personal passion to give blood and help my fellow Americans out. It's my get back to humanity, I think. So I'd love to have you all think about that, contemplate, whoever's listening to this. Friday, April 11th, 10 to 4 is for our community. The school district's involved, the city's involved, and I'd love to see all the beds full. The Red Cross Director for the region gave me two more signs to post. I posted one at the corner of North-South Gibraltar Road there, and posted one here at City Hall, and let the city workers know today when I dropped it off. And I'll collect those and give those back to her, because she repurposes those. And yeah, I think that's about it. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
You need an appointment, or can you just walk in?
Yeah, we'll take, they'll take walk-ins that day of. That's what I wanted to say. Thanks for bringing that up. If you have all 47 slots full, which we don't yet, it's a 20% turnout deferment. People can't make the appointment, something comes up. So they have a, they're sending the phlebotomists out, they're sending the diesel, their, their gas up trucks, they're sending, you know, resources to Gibraltar to collect the, the pints of blood, and so they want to have a certain amount of bank. And then people get tested and something's wrong with the blood, so they want to get a certain amount. One other exciting thing for me personally is they started this tracking thing on, on the app, so you can see where your donation went to. In the last two cycles I've given, it's gone to a children's hospital and university in Indiana. So it's real, really meaningful to you personally when you know where your blood went. Now, if an adult needs it, that's fine, but you're helping the child out. It's like all of us, I think, just your heart goes out. There's a little child that got my blood, and it just means the world to me personally. So that's my selling point to this. I get nothing out of it, except the gratification of bringing the community together. And yeah, so thanks.
Dennis, if you've been, if you've been a recipient of transfusions, are you precluded from being able to give?
No, it's a good question. I can ask the rep. I'd rather have that answer from her, and I can get back to you. Something I've learned more recently is people have had cancer, they receive treatment. Once chemo's been done for a year and the person's healthy, they can get blood.
Okay.
Whereas before, they were like out forever, I guess.
Okay.
People are insulin-dependent diabetics, they can get blood.
Okay.
So some people had thought before they were never to give blood again. For whatever reasons, they have made exemptions. I think 38% of the population are even eligible to give blood, that's my understanding.
Okay.
And 2% to 3% actually give, so.
Okay.
And the need's great, you know, constant, constantly, the needs, we see those signs, you know, the need is great, but once you start getting involved and start the process and trying to organize.
Yeah.
It's, I just stopped by the Westfield Center today, the Rotary in Trenton had a blood drive this morning. So she's a regional for Southwest Michigan, so she's driving everywhere and setting up another drive everywhere, so. Yeah, it was transfusions, and if you're eligibility.
Yeah.
Have to give a transfusion. Okay.
Yeah.
I'll find out for you.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Any other public comment for counsel this evening? All right, well, that will close our public comment, unless you're coming up. Okay, that'll close our public comments, and I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Walden, is there a second?
Second.
I don't know who had that one. Katie's called.
Molnar had it.
Those are the runner.
Councilman Molnar.
Molnar had the second. Any discussion on our adjournment? Katie, whenever you're ready, we'll have you call roll.
Walden.
Yes.
Cox.
Yes.
McNabb.
Yes.
Molnar.
Yes.
Schumate.
Yes.
Valentine.
Thank you all. Have a great evening.
No.
My husband made.